Thank you, Rod. Good evening. Thanks for coming to this Planning Board public hearing. My name is Christopher Senni. I live in Westboro and I am one of the partners working on the River Bridge project at the Rotary in South Berlin. I'm joined tonight by my brother Matt Senni, who is my partner. We also have two other Senni siblings of our parents who are partners, our two sisters, Casey and Allison. They don't live here in Massachusetts. One lives in Virginia and one lives in Connecticut. They're very much equal partners with us, but they couldn't be here tonight. I hope to get them up to the town meeting. Rod mentioned that after this public hearing, there will be a town meeting to consider eight different warrant articles that have to do with the River Bridge project. That will be November 12th, and it's at the Memorial School, if I'm correct. I'm not sure what time the town meeting will start.
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty? Okay. I'm also joined by Mike Dryden of Water and Design Associates. Mike has been with the River Bridge project since we first proposed it in 2009. He's done all of the landscape architecture and master planning for our project. I'm glad to have him here tonight as we look to make some adjustments to the zoning overlay and the development agreement we signed with the town. I'm also joined by Robert Mulcahy of Landworks in Worcester. Robert's joined our team more recently. And all of the pictures you see on display and which you'll see in some of the slides have been done by Robert, who's got a very good eye and a lot of good experience with mixed-use villages, which is what we propose to build here at River Bridge. I have a slide presentation which will take about 12 or 15 minutes. I'm not going to go through each warrant article, but I do have a list of the articles. At the end of the slides, I actually have the wording of each article that will be considered at town meeting. If any of you would like to actually look at the wording, we can flip down to that particular slide and talk about it. So this goes fairly quickly. This is the rendering that Robert has done of what we hope will be our small Main Street at River Bridge. You can see two-story structures in the foreground. That would be retail on the bottom floor and office up above on either side of our small Main Street. And in the back, you can see a three-story apartment building that we proposed to build at the end of our Main Street. This is the land that the Senni family was lucky enough to buy in 2009 from the Reese family. They owned it for 84 years. It's 112 acres, and it's inside the yellow lines that I just traced. Here's exit 25 off of 290. Here's Donald Lynch Boulevard leading to the Mall, which abuts our property. And here's the existing Rotary in the center of South Berlin. We can't build on all of our land. In fact, 86 acres is already the subject of a conservation restriction. And we have two brooks, North Brook and Barefoot Brook, which join and then at this point meet up with the Asabet River, which flows from Westboro all the way to Concord. So 86 acres is permanently restricted already. We can't build any buildings on that land. In the middle is what we call our permissible building area, which is 26 acres. And you can see an early version of our master plan superimposed on those 26 acres. Around the time that the Mall was built, the Solomon Pond Mall gave some money to the town to do a master plan of this area. You can see the Rotary here. And they called for a mixed-use village pulled in tight to the Rotary. This is River Bridge, and we feel we have done that by respecting the land that we put into conservation restriction. In 2004, your town rejected a big-box project offered for this property, and you can see that it uses quite a bit more land than either the master plan or River Bridge. And then in 2005, a new version, because the developer had been told that the town would like a Main Street, so this was sort of an attempt at a Main Street, but really still big-box, and wanted mixed use, so there were some condominium units proposed as well. In this plan, River Road West would have been directed over to Whitney and would have been blocked by these buildings. Both of those bottom plans were rejected at town meeting. This is a master plan we presented to the town in 2009 when we got the Village Overlay District bylaw passed. And what you see is a collection of buildings on both sides of River Road West. This is the west side. Our new convenience store gas station is here. And the Growing Room Daycare Center that we're just about to open in January is here. But I just show you this to let you know that River Bridge has always been a collection of a number of different types of buildings and types of uses. The Village Overlay District has always allowed us to put a total of 205 two-bedroom dwellings or a maximum of 410 bedrooms. 90 were supposed to be senior or age-restricted in the form of either a continuing care retirement community or an assisted living facility. 115 were allowed to be non-age-restricted. Of these, 84 would be part of a rental program, which we call LIP, or Local Initiative Petition. And under that program, the town would get credit for 84 affordable units, which would get the town of Berlin well up above the 10% of housing stock that needs to be affordable in order to avoid 40B projects. Also, along the way, we canceled the River Run project, which was a 40B. It was 32 single-family homes. 26 of them were three-bedroom. It would have had 90 bedrooms, and it would have generated 23 schoolchildren. We canceled that project the night that the Village Overlay District was approved. We've always had permission to put 130,000 square foot of neighborhood retail, not big-box. The footprints are limited, so that we won't be building a big-box development. And 18,000 square feet of second-floor office space. I hope you can all read this okay. It looks a little fuzzy. But these are the articles. There are five that will amend the development agreement. And I know we're in the public hearing on the zoning at this point, but I'm going to make my full presentation, and then I know you're going to close that hearing and open one on the development agreement. But there are five warrant articles that change the development agreement we signed with the town. The same night, December 2nd, 2009, when town meeting approved the overlay zone, the board of selectmen and my brother Matt and I signed the development agreement, which sets up certain rules that you're not allowed to cover in bylaws, because the Attorney General doesn't want to see all kinds of agreements between the developer and the town. That goes into a development agreement. And then there are a series of warrant articles on the zoning bylaw itself. Our main ask is that we want to convert the 90 units that were supposed to be senior from an assisted living or CCRC into 45 one-bedroom apartments and 45 two-bedroom apartments. And we want to reduce the total bedroom count from 410 to 365. We want to delay the bridge widening. We agreed to widen the deck of the bridge by two feet on either side, the bridge over North Brook. It's very expensive and time-consuming to do the full bridge widening plan, and it needs approval of the Department of Transportation. And we do need some more time to get that work done. We are planning to do that work. We want to give the Planning Board the flexibility to remove the bypass road. That's a road that would have connected our new roundabout and River Road West with Whitney, which we proposed because we were planning a market for the west side, which hasn't materialized. The ambulance overage charges, we'd like to shift those to a not-for-profit owners' association majority exists at River Bridge. This part of the development agreement has to do with failed ambulance calls or ambulance calls where the patient's insurance doesn't cover, either because the patient is feeling better by the time the ambulance gets to them or for some other reason. Sometimes the town receives a bill, and the town asks us to put a promise into the development agreement that if there are any false ambulance calls at River Bridge, we would pay for that. Not only pay for it, but pay 1.25% of those bills, and we've agreed to do that. This is just shifting that responsibility over to the TRA, the River Bridge Association, which is the owners' association. We're looking for two more years before we have to begin paying an extra tax of $51,200 a year if we don't build senior housing. The reason is that we do have a memory care facility that doesn't want to come into River Bridge, but wants to come into our other property located 3,000 feet away near Spooky World, which we call River Run. And we'd like, if we get the memory care facility up at River Run, we'd like that to qualify so that we can avoid that extra tax. And we're giving the town, in this warrant article, four extra years to exercise a right to buy half of River Run for a dollar. This was an additional part of our mitigation, and there's a developable parcel up on River Run that the town has a right to buy. On the zoning, the two that are in italics, we are going to ask to move over, to pass over. The increase in residential square feet was something we thought would be a good idea, but we don't want to complicate the discussion at the town meeting, and we don't need that extra square footage very much. And the other italicized one is to clarify the height of residences, but we're going to pass that over because we can live perfectly well with the height restrictions in the bylaw. The conversion of the 90 units just matches up with number one up here under the development agreement. That's our big request. Shifting the 18,000 square feet of second-story office to retail, just in case we can't fill 18,000 square feet with office. And finally, we're proposing a warrant article that would amend the zoning bylaw in every limited business zone, which is what River Run is zoned, to allow a state-licensed memory care facility. What hasn't changed? What hasn't changed for River Bridge is that we are still 148,000 square feet of commercial space. We've built 16,000 already. That's the convenience store gas station and the daycare center. We're still 205 total dwellings. We're still a mixed-use village. We still have pleasing architecture, which we initially borrowed from Pure Hockey and carried over to our convenience store and then carried over to the daycare center. We still provide relief from 40B projects. We still offer 84 units that would be qualified by the state. That will be the first housing constructed. So the very highest priority for River Bridge is to get the town of Berlin up over the 10%. We still promise that if we sell any piece of River Bridge to a not-for-profit entity, they will pay pilot payments in lieu of taxes. We have our 86 acres in the conservation restriction. You may recall that because we pulled it in as tight as we did, there were 20 acres that were otherwise buildable. We gave the town the seven-acre community garden, as we promised. We're taking care of the ambulance charges. The $500,000 mitigation fund, which we have to pay $100,000 per year, beginning when we reach a certain number of square feet, is still the same. We're not changing that at all. And our obligation to widen the bridge, we're not changing. And in fact, both of those have been built into the common charge budget at River Bridge, so that all of our tenants and purchasers of any parcel there are going to help contribute to that fund. And we extended the town's option to purchase half of River Run for a dollar. Here's what's different. We did not achieve what's called vertical mixed use. That means apartments above stores. It's a great idea, and it's the way old neighborhoods developed, but the banks don't want to underwrite a mortgage when a building is used partially for residential and partially for commercial. But we are still a balanced mixed-use village. We secured a hotel deal. We're going to build, as part of our commercial, a Homewood Suites Hotel on the west side of River Road West. That's the same side of the street as the convenience store gas station, and that will generate an additional $100,000 per year in a room tax that goes to the town. We might not reach our 18,000 square feet, so we're looking for flexibility there. We have not had luck with a CCRC or assisted living. That's why we're requesting that those 90 units be allowed to be converted to 45 one-bedroom and 45 two-bedroom. We have a buyer, as I mentioned, to purchase River Run for a memory care facility. Again, because the town has a right to buy half of the developable area for a dollar, they would receive half of those proceeds if we sold it. And again, we need more time on the bridge widening, and since we didn't attract a market, we would like to remove the bypass road. Here's a side-by-side comparison. Commercial square foot is the same dwellings. Bedrooms go down under this set of warrant articles. We still provide the 84. The 90 age-restricted go away. The non-age-restricted increases from 115 to 205. The parking spaces increase from 706 to 810. We still have an overall positive fiscal impact when we consider all taxes that are paid to the town set off against all expenses we cause. And in terms of market acceptance and financeability, what we got approval for in 2009, which we thought was perfect at that time, has not been financeable. We have not been able to get financing for or find partners for the 90 senior and the 115 apartments. There is a very, very strong market right now for apartments. And we know that we can finance and underwrite 205 apartments. We're going to make 45 of those limited to one bedroom. I don't know if you can see this. Maybe we could turn it on. Thanks, Dennis. This is just something else that's changed. This is the old banner door building, which we took down. It's sort of between our liquor store and the new daycare center we built. This is the old block and brick plant that the Reese families had on the west side of River Road West. Here's our convenience store gas station, which you're probably familiar with, and we're so excited to be finishing our second building on the next slide, the Growing Room Daycare Center, which will open in January. So this is the new master plan. You can see the convenience store gas station with the pump, which we plan to put a restaurant or retail stores, but most likely a restaurant. We do still have to build this roundabout, which is about 800 feet away from the existing Rotary, as you approach from 290. And we're still planning to build a perpendicular Main Street. We have the five buildings that will be apartments, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. And this area is further commercial development. This is a view. You can see this red circle that's right in the middle of the Rotary and this sort of fan shape. This is a view. If you were standing in the Rotary and you looked past the front of the Growing Room at the back of these retail buildings, this is what you'd see. Here's the Growing Room, a red and white building. Here's the little porcache for dropping kids off. Here are the retail buildings that are on either side of Main Street, and Main Street would be accessed right here. And this is the back of the retail buildings. Over in the distance, you can see the three-story apartment building. This is a view. The circle is now right on River Road West, looking down Main Street. And you can see the two-story retail and office with the residents in the back. And this is a view from south of our permissible building area, just before, as you're heading north on River Road West, just before you would get to the roundabout, looking at a bank building and the southern faces of these residential buildings. So here's the bank building. Here's the beginning of Main Street. And here you see the three-story residential buildings. These will not be Avalon-looking. They will not have flat roofs. They will have dormers and pitched roofs. And because of the way we're designing it, it sort of cheats a little and looks a bit like a two-and-a-half-story building. This was what we showed on December 2nd, 2009, when we got the zoning approval. You see two-story structures, and you see three-story structures with the slanted roofs and the dormers to make it look not so imposing as a three-story building might look. This is what we canceled at River Run. This was a 32-unit, single-family, for-sale product. 26 of the units were three-bedroom. There were 90 bedrooms here. The town only got credit for eight affordable units, half of which, four of which are used to offset the market-grade units here. So it only netted the town four units to help us get toward 10%. So it did practically nothing, and it generated 23 schoolchildren. And as I mentioned, on the night of our zoning approval in December of 2009, we signed the development agreement and we purchased it. The meeting at the town meeting was actually part of the closing on that property. And as I mentioned, there's a big part of River Run, Spooky World is right here. There's a big part of River Run which is in a conservation restriction already. But there is a buildable area right here, and we broke that into two parcels, 6A and And we studied this. It was actually Mike Dryden who did this work. And you can see that you can fit two different developments here, not residential, but commercial. This is a 20,000-square-foot office building, and this was possibly going to be the HUD 202 project, but it could also accommodate a 20,000-square-foot office building. This is the parcel, it's actually this whole parcel, that the town has an option to buy for a dollar. As you may know, back in 2009 and again now, the town, the Planning Board hired a consultant to study the fiscal impact of River Bridge. And it was just updated, dated yesterday, October 28. And what it shows is that even with additional students, River Bridge is between $115,000 and $780,000 positive cash flow every year, considering all municipal costs and all tax revenue. The new students that will be generated at River Bridge are estimated to be between 35, that's if the unrestricted units are converted to condominiums at some point in the future, and 41 if the apartments always stay apartments. But keep in mind that of the 90 units we want to convert from senior, 45 are one-bedroom, and the town's consultant says that they'll generate no students and only 11 students are derived from the 45 two-bedroom units. The prior 2009 study that was done by the same company, the same consulting firm, compared River Bridge favorably to further potential 40B projects, which generate schoolchildren with no offsetting commercial tax revenues. There's table three in the 2009 study. The 40B project that we canceled at River Run would have generated 23 students. Two similar-sized 40B projects would generate more schoolchildren than River Bridge, again, with no financial benefits to the town. So the, go ahead, Mike. If we could have the lights up. So the main point that I'm trying to make is that I know that 205 apartments sounds a little daunting. We've always had permission for 115, and that was going to be complemented by a 90-unit senior project. We have not had any luck interesting a party and buying a lot for the senior housing or being our partner. With the hotel, we put the land in, and we're a 50% partner with our hotel partners. And sometimes that works. Even on that basis, we couldn't bring in the senior housing. The 45 two-bedroom units that we're converting generate 11 schoolchildren. In total, we might be somewhere between 35 and 41 schoolchildren on average, but we get the town credit for 84 affordable units. And we're not converting those 90 units at the town meeting. What the bylaw says, the warrant article says, that if the voters pass it, the Planning Board may convert the 90 units to 45 one-bedroom and 45 two-bedroom if they think it is a wise thing to do while we're getting site plan approval for that part of the project. They won't do it unless we've confirmed that the 84 affordable units have been approved by what we call DHCD, or the Department of Housing and Community Development. There's no way Berlin will ever be able to get above 10% subsidized housing. We call it subsidized housing inventory, SHI. If we don't zone in apartments, which you did in 2009, we would like to build those apartments. We're not going to build Avalon. We're going to build something that's very tasteful, that's very much still a walkable mixed-use village. We didn't achieve the vertical mixed use, but we do have horizontal mixed use. The Main Street will be very close to the apartments, and it will be walkable. So we ask that you consider the merits of what River Bridge has to offer, that you consider that we've really kept every promise we've made, and we've been very careful, we've worked very hard. My brother moved up from Long Island three years ago and has been full-time on River Bridge at the site office near the liquor store and runs the liquor store. And I spend about a third of my time on River Bridge. It may not be wise for four adult kids to inherit some money from a dad who passed away in 2006 and put it all in one piece of property, but that's what we did. It's all in the dirt that we have out at River Bridge. And we love this property, and we so appreciate the chance to do what we're doing, but we couldn't anticipate in 2009 everything we would need to implement the project. So we're looking for your support at town meeting. And I'm happy to take any questions.
You didn't mention one feature, which is really a minor detail, but it might be important to some people. And that question is, what do you foresee as the possible future location of the liquor store?
Thank you for that question. We inherited the liquor store. Neither Matt nor I have ever been in the liquor business, and I was so afraid of it. I said, "Look, Matt, I don't want to own any part of a liquor store, and I don't want River Bridge to own any part of a liquor store." So we formed something called Berlin Liquors LLC, and it has one owner, my brother. And he taught himself the liquor business, and he has a management company that helps him and has taught him. We do not want to keep the Reese Winery the way it looks today. We would like to create a better tenant. We would like the liquor store to be a tenant in the commercial area, maybe as a more upscale wine and liquor store. I don't know. You know, I lived in Westboro and have for 16 years, and we go to Julio's Liquors. That's about 5,000 square feet, and he does a marvelous business. I don't know if we could support something that elaborate here, but we view the liquor store as something we always want to own, and we want it to be a tenant. We own the gas station and convenience store. It has a mortgage of $2,400,000 on it, and we were offered $3,001,000 about six months ago, and we turned that down. We never, never want to sell the convenience store gas station. The daycare center, we own. That's our land. We got the construction loan, and we're turning it over to our tenant in a couple of weeks. We can't own every square foot at River Bridge, though. We've invested a lot of equity that Matt and I didn't make, our parents made. And we invested it in River Bridge, but it's not enough money to drive what's really a $65 to $70 million total value when it's done. So we've always hoped that we could own half of it. And part of the half we want to own is the liquor store in a nicer retail building.
What percentage do we go up to for affordable housing?
In terms of area meeting income?
Well, for the 40B project.
Oh, 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 what does 84 units get you? It will get you almost 14%. But given the way Berlin develops, I think it would be 20 years before, if ever you had to think about doing something with your zoning to prevent yourself from falling below. Because if anyone develops anything fewer than six lots, you don't need to provide anything affordable. So if someone takes a farm and divides it into five lots and builds five new houses, that doesn't, that only hurts the ratio. It doesn't help it. So to be helped, you either have to zone in apartments like we are and get credit for 100% of the apartments, or you have to have some larger subdivisions that would provide some affordable. And your bylaw is very clever. Section 730 of the Berlin zoning bylaw requires 15%. So if someone did a 20-lot subdivision somewhere, or 20 townhomes, or somehow built 20 new units, 15% of those would be affordable. But keep in mind, the first 10% doesn't get you anything, because that's just holding status quo. You only net the difference between 10% and 15%. So it's just, on the current path, without zoning in some apartments, you'll never get there. And if you follow through with what we did in 2009, you'll get there quickly, and you won't slip out of that status for a long, long time.
And as clever as we were, ever since we passed the inclusionary zone in bylaw, every subdivision that's been built has been, and these are new roads, you know, two houses, three houses, no one has come near us with a proposal to build more than six units in a subdivision. So, you know, it
So, you know, it's not going to happen through that avenue at the rate we're going. And we continue to build single-family houses here and there, and become more vulnerable to 40Bs as a result. We were over 10% for a while, but we've fallen back below. And I think, as Chris has said, it's very unlikely that we'd ever get there on our own without an apartment component built into some of our 40B. The state is very smart. When they, a lot of people don't like 40B. In my town, we have two 40B projects. They're both Avalon projects, one on the east side of town and one on the west side of town. And I think they've brought up a very good alternative housing stock to large, single-family homes. And Westboro never would have zoned in. But what chapter 40B says to a town like Berlin is, if you'd really like to get yourselves up above 10% and zone in apartments, and within a specific apartment program, dedicate 25% of those. In this case, 25% of 84 is 21. There will be 21 real affordable units that are leased at rates that the state considers affordable. And you'll get credit for all 84. You'll get credit for 100% of the apartments. And the reason the state did that was, first of all, apartments are more affordable, even if they're not leased at affordable rates. And second of all, how, why would towns ever do it if you didn't get a big bonus? And they were very clever, and I think Berlin was very clever to pass the village overlay district. We're sorry that it's taken us so long. I think there's at least one 40B that wouldn't have been coming in if we'd been quicker. But the market hasn't been helpful. And now, we know what the market wants. They want 200 apartments, not 115. And these changes allow the planning board to have the flexibility to say, "Okay, it's all making sense, we like the way it looks, we like the way it sits on the site plan. We'll convert." And it will really be up to the planning board to do this. Right now, they can't do it unless we change both the development agreement and the zoning bylaw.
How many of your affordable apartments are you going to allow for homeless shelters?
Well, Berlin's bylaw, section 730, is really very imaginative. I'm sure some people in the room were involved in writing it. What it says is that we don't want you to just take the easy route out. So, the easy route out is to offer apartments at rental rates that are affordable to someone making 80% of area median income. That's moderate income, but not low income. There is another bar that the state set, which is 50% of area median income, which is not in poverty, but is truly low income. And your bylaw, section 730, which we have to follow, our bylaw says we have to follow this provision, says when you take the actual affordable units, divide them 75-25%. The 25% have to be leased at low-income rates, 50% of area median income. The other 75 can be leased at 80% of area median income. So, I don't know if any of it would be qualified the way you're imagining. But I'm very pleased and proud that some of the units at River Bridge will be leased at rates the state considers affordable to someone making only 50% of area median income.
Median income for our area, and I'm not sure what it is this year, maybe Eloise's? It was 84,000. And so, 80% of mean was down in the 60,000 range, 64 or 5, in order to qualify for the 75% of the units that you're talking about. And if you jump down to the 50% of mean, you're talking about an income level that's in the, you know, the $40,000 range. But I don't, we're in Metro West 2 or something like that. Has that number changed much? Yeah, so, you're talking about someone that's earning what I earn. Actually, more than what I earn. So, that's the range we're talking about, is 40 for the 50, 45 or so for the 50% and 60-something, 64 or 5 for the other. Thanks.
Why don't you replace the CCRC with the memory care?
The memory care is an industry that won't pay very much for land. If we had succeeded in getting a CCRC, and by the way, there are no CCRCs being financed. That's the entry model, where someone pays the equivalent of a purchase price, and then their estate gets 90% of that back when they die or move out. So, you're paying 300,000, 400,000, $500,000 to move into a CCRC. That model has been in trouble ever since we got this zoning bylaw approved. So, no one came to look at that. We actually paid a company in Texas that specializes in CCRC to do a feasibility study for us. And because we paid them, they said, "Yes, this is feasible," but it really wasn't. The assisted living is rental. So, that's where someone can rent a unit for $2,000 a month or $2,500 a month, and can stay as long as that works for their family. There are some assisted living facilities being built in this area. There's one being built in Westboro. And every time I drive by, and it's across from the post office in my town, I just want to pick it up and move it over here. But either would pay somewhere around $20,000 to $25,000 per dwelling unit within that facility, which is a respectable amount. Memory care won't pay anything like that. And so, our challenges at River Bridge are that we need to build an onsite sewage treatment plant and a public water supply. Our public water supply is nearly done. The hard part there is the wells. And we've already dug four bedrock wells that go down 1,200 feet and have been permitted by the DEP for 66,000 gallons a day. We need to distribute it around the site, but that's the hard, the hard part is done. The onsite sewage treatment plant involves a building and a mechanism of tanks underground and leach fields, which is very, very expensive. And in order to have the funds to build that system, which allow us to build the hotel and the other commercial, we need to sell the land for the apartments, and we need to get enough for it that it works. And if we tried to put the memory care at River Run down at River Bridge, we would be using up too much of our entitlements on something that can't really carry its own weight.
So, you aren't going to own the apartment buildings. How do we know that the owner will be as good an owner as you've been?
Thank you for saying so. We created something called the River Bridge Association, Inc. And there is something recorded on the land records called the Declaration of Covenants, Conditions, and Restrictions, DCCR. It's a long document, and we wrote it. And it sets up all the rules for how anyone who buys a pad at River Bridge has to behave and relate to one another and share the costs of snow plowing and refuse removal and landscaping, and design. There's a design process built right into the DCCR. And everyone we meet with, the first thing we do is we give them a copy of the DCCR, and we say, "You have to follow all of these rules and regulations." So, we've set all of that up, and it's recorded on the land records. Anyone researching title to one of our pieces of property will find it. And not to mention that we give it to them. So, anyone that we meet who might purchase the apartment opportunity is going to have to follow all of those rules.
I'm also concerned about, I'm the only one talking, that fire and rescue already can't answer calls. That this is really going to push us over.
I think it might. I agree with you. I think Berlin is probably looking at growing their police department and their fire department. And I realize that that's a very difficult thing to swallow. You don't want to leave this sort of volunteer, all-call, small operations that you have. But I think it is coming, and I think it's coming whether River Bridge were built or not. We are, there's a transition. So, we're paying $500,000, public safety mitigation money in five installments of $100,000. That's to help with the transition from the size, police and fire that you are, to where I think you probably have to go. In addition to that, the town was very smart. They knew we weren't Highland Commons, so we couldn't pay an enormous mitigation. But they also knew we had some land. So, that's why they bargained for the right to buy parcel 6B at River Run. Now, we bought it for $677,000 to cancel out that 40B. And the memory care facility is willing to pay more than that. And since the town has the right to buy half of it for a dollar, and we're extending that by four years in these warrant articles, half of the proceeds from that sale would come to the town as additional mitigation. Plus, if we put them up there, if together we decide that that's what we want to do, that's a taxpayer that will generate $150,000 a year in taxes. So, we're probably making a million-dollar contribution to that process of transitioning from those departments where they are to where they're going. But again, I think some of that growth is in the pipeline regardless of River Bridge. And I think we're carrying some of the burden of doing that. And again, the fiscal impact statement, even considering school impact, shows us as a net plus to the town. There are tax dollars that are more than what it costs to service River Bridge. So, hopefully, on a long-term basis, we're helping to shoulder those extra costs.
I would just like to add, as Julia spoke, first of all, my name's Nadine Exstrom, and I'm the superintendent of schools here. So, I was very interested in listening to this this evening. But I would like to just also say that this is also very concerning in regards to having 40, potentially 40 new students in our school. I think you've been made aware of our concern in that area. We have less than 200 students currently in our elementary school. And so, by having over 40 students is increasing the population another 20%, which is astronomical in a size school that we have. It would increase our transportation, we'd have to have another bus for our students, which is on average about 50,000 plus a year. Plus, at least two additional classroom teachers and at least another special ed teacher. So, when you add all of that up, that's about another, almost a half a million dollars when you really look at all of those additional costs. So, this is very concerning, although I do want to say I appreciate all the hard work that all of you have done. And it looks like it would be a beautiful facility. But I just want to, I would be not serving the school district well if I didn't at least speak up about, those are some of the concerns that we do have in our education.
I appreciate your comment. I see it as a big impact. Two 40B projects would generate the same number of schoolchildren without the offsetting commercial tax revenue. So, if we can convert the 90 to 45 one-bedroom and 45 two-bedroom, again, the planning board's not going to do that unless they have a letter from DHCD saying, "You're good on the 84 units." It will stop any further 40Bs. The one we canceled on the way into town was 23 children. We got credit for that back in 2009. Maybe we don't deserve credit again for that. But there is an active 40B being developed in town. There are, you know, you are a rural town with farmland. And the thing about 40B is that when a town is below the 10%, the developer can circumvent zoning and place them wherever they want to. And apartments are really best in a transitional zone, which is what we think that South Berlin flats really is. It's a transition from the main part of town to the rest of Metro West, in 290, Marlborough. So, I look at it as, yes, we're generating that. We zoned it in, now we're increasing it through this conversion, if the planning board gives us that permission. But with two 40Bs, we're positive and two 40Bs will be negative. Probably vary considerably. We're somewhere between 100 and 800,000 dollars positive every year. That's in the study that was dated yesterday. Two 40Bs generating that same number of kids are going to be negative by, you know, 400,000 or 500,000. So, it's a little bit scary. But I think this is a logical way to allow us to grow from 115 to 205. We haven't been able to market 115 apartments. If we had, we'd already be in good shape on the 40B. We have the ability to do this. It would happen in 2014, and it would get us past the 40B danger. So, but I do understand that this is a significant impact on your department and the whole town.
Chris, in the planning board, do we know what the impact on the other 40B, if it comes in ahead of time, might be count-wise? And do we have a clear picture of which grade levels these kids will hit? Because if they all hit Berlin Memorial, it's a little bit different than if they scatter through the grades. You might need more building, you might need more teachers. So, does anyone have any thoughts about that or figures?
I don't. I don't know, Tim?
Well, we know the 40B that's trying to move through the pipeline now is proposed for 30 single-family detached three-bedroom houses. So, it's similar to River Run. So, its impact would be essentially half of what we're projecting River Run's total, 200 units to be. And as Chris has said, you build 30 units, 25% are affordable. So, you know, what have you got, you know, seven? You need three of those right off the bat, just to me, at 10%. So, you've only gained four. So, you've got a four-plus in terms of your attempt to try to keep up with 40B. You're never going to get there. And I know what Nadine is saying, but if we don't stop that type of 40B, we'll overwhelm the schools to the point where, you know, there just is no way to keep up. So, the notion that the planning board, I think, believes in is that if we move in this direction and can build this firewall against 40B, it allows us, through the housing partnership, to work proactively on those affordable units that we want to see in the future. So, they get built where we want them. And some of them should be single-family three-bedroom units that are affordable. Because that's, I think, a moral obligation as a town we ought to endeavor to satisfy. But they'll be where we want them, when we want them, engaged to flow into, you know, a governmental system that can support it, rather than being 40Bs that don't pay their way, that overwhelm our resources and never allow us to satisfy that 10% goal. And, you know, that's what's attractive about this option as opposed to, you know, some of these others. Now, can we predict where these kids are going to go in terms of their grade level? You know, no. You end up, if you look at Sawyer Hill LLC, I mean, my sense was that we bombarded second grade or something like that. And it's leveled out over the three or four years that they've been there. So, initially, you get walloped, potentially. You're likely to see, I suspect, younger students move into newer housing. You know, it's just the nature of the way things flow. Families migrate in and buy new housing when they have young families that need to live in new housing. So, you know, you get that K through 6 impact that, you know, you might want to say, "Well, how are we going to deal with this?" But, I mean, I think that's the reality. Now, my sense right now is that Berlin Memorial is, is this true? Is Berlin Memorial almost at one class per grade?
There are two classes that are potential, but we've had a lot of move-ins just recently. So, we have a solid two classes per grade right now, as of the October 1 reporting.
K through 5?
K through 5.
Okay.
At the October 1 reporting, it looked like we could have potentially gone down to one class in at least one grade. But now, we've had many move-ins, so we have...
And so, and your average class size is?
About 14.
Right. So, I mean, I understand that if you had 40 kids and they all ended up, or, you know, half of them were in second grade, half of them in third grade, you explode. If you have 40 kids, K through 5, and they distribute equitively, it seems like we're able to accommodate that without having to have the system explode. But I think the answer to Dennis's question is, none of us have that crystal ball.
Did you have a follow-up, Dennis?
No, I think we all support the theory. No, I think we all support the theory, and we like the idea of stopping the forty Bs. I just wanted to get a figure from Nadine so we could tie it into capital and...
Budget planning process.
Yeah, not to be against this plan.
When you plan some of the rentals, could you make sure that they are handicap accessible, at least on the ground-level floor? Because that is a need for the town.
Actually, we put that in the development agreement, and we're not changing it with any of these modifications.
Thank you. So, back to the affordable. If this gets passed, I know the other forty B that's going through the pipeline, will that then be halted? No.
I don't believe so.
No?
I went to the field viewing for that proposal, and there's still opportunity for the town to comment on that proposal. I'm not sure how willing the state is to react to commentary from the town. You know, we suggested that, in the case of River Bridge, it was an effort on the part of the town to work with the developer to find a site for an affordable project that had highway access, a walkable site that was going to have certain amenities like the daycare center and other facilities down the road, the convenience store, and that in our mind, that was a logical forty B site, as opposed to the end of Dudley Road through another forty B site, trying to be serviced by, you know, well, school buses don't go there because it's, I mean, it's just nonsensical. And I think if public safety and the selectmen and the board of health were to write letters to the state and suggest that they had concerns, which I believe they do, because they've, you know, mentioned them to us already, but I think it needs to be articulated in black and white, not just, you know, sort of helter-skelter. A calculated, you know, planned response from those boards to the state might very well result in the state saying, well, you know, maybe in this case, this town that's been above ten percent once before and has the potential to be above ten percent again should be listened to, you know, but that's a gamble. I don't, I'm only half-heartedly hopeful that they might respond. But I think the town needs to make that effort, otherwise I think we just sort of neglect our responsibility as a public service.
Even if a comprehensive permit granted by the zoning board of appeals, and they have very little flexibility to turn one down, that will create some rights, and no one should intentionally interfere with those rights. But just because a permit is issued doesn't mean a project gets built. There are a lot of steps that the developer has to complete, and a comprehensive permit can lapse or not be utilized. On our part, we will work quickly. In fact, the DHCD called us about a week and a half ago and said, how's it going? We hear you have a town meeting vote to convert some of your units. I don't even know how they knew that. But I know that there's pressure from Governor Patrick on DHCD to get a number of the larger inclusionary zoning, or the cases where a town zoned in affordable housing done so that there are credit to the governor, whose term is coming to an end. So, they seem very anxious. We'll work quickly. If this looks like it's going to be possible, we have to do a marketing plan, we have to plan out among those eighty-four units which ones will be the affordable, and we have to do all kinds of legal deed restriction documents. And then, if it goes the way we want, I think we'd be in a position to draw a building permit by May, and that would then perfect it. We don't have to be built for those eighty-four units to come on to the ledger, but we have to have the marketing plan approved, all the legal documents done, and we have to draw a building permit. And then, the town clerk can say, I'd like to get certified, and those units would be on the docket.
That's only good for two years.
And that's good for two years.
My final question.
Sorry.
You talk about converting the apartments to condos. I don't know, is that possible in this town?
Honestly, we never talked about that. I know that it showed up as a featured element in the fiscal impact analysis. What we told Community Opportunities Group, Inc., is that eighty-four of the units definitely would never be converted, because they'll be deed restricted to stay rental. The remaining one hundred and twenty units could be originally developed as condominiums, originally developed as apartments, and later converted. We don't know. The interest we have is in all apartments, and I don't know if that party would later convert some or all of those hundred and twenty units to condominiums. So, we never, we didn't make as a main feature of our presentation that we know for sure that any of those will be converted to condominiums. I understand that the value is higher and the tax revenue would be greater if they were, but we've never promised that. We know we can underwrite two hundred and five apartments, some won't be deed restricted, so there is a sort of pattern where someone gets all the benefit from the depreciation for about five or six years, and then they do convert them. But we don't have any knowledge that that's the intention of the plan. Well, thank you for coming tonight. I know the planning board needs to close a public hearing and maybe open up a second one, so that still has to happen, but thank you very much for your attention and for coming out tonight.
This was the public hearing announced in the paper as a public hearing in the public notices. My wife said to me the other day, and she says, there's a public hearing going to be held in Berlin on converting senior housing to affordable housing. I said, gee, I don't know anything about it. When is that? She says it's Tuesday night. And there it was in Metro West, or the Metro News article. I would imagine they saw the public notice and they started putting things together.
I saw it too.
You saw it too?
Yeah.
Were you shocked as I was?
Actually, it made the Boston Globe as well.
Okay. Article six in the zoning bylaws, or the article six in the town meeting has to do...
I don't know what number. I forget what number it is, but it's on our warrant.
It's on the warrant.
As an extra article, but it's separate from River Bridge.
Delete agricultural and rural uses and table charts, writing staples. Delete the letter S as special permit is required. No special permit required for writing staples. It's treated just like other agricultural uses. And that's one of the articles. If anybody has a question about, comments they want to make on that.
Isn't that more of a housekeeping, since the state won't let you?
That's about right.
Just a quick question, since I'm operating a writing stable, mine is Greg, half penny over at one eighty-seven Highland Street. So, with the removal of the special permit for us to get a writing staple license, we just have to do a plan review with your board, is that correct?
With the ZVA.
Excuse me?
ZVA does that.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments on the articles, the zoning bylaws? Okay, then I've announced that this public hearing is closed. And now, open the next public hearing. This is the public hearing on the articles to do with the development agreement. We've kind of had the presentation and talked about it. Are there any comments that you would like to make on the bylaws for the development agreement?
I just want to clarify, the reason there's two hearings is that we're required by the state to have a public hearing on any zoning articles. The planning board is supposed to report at a town meeting a vote that it takes in regard to those zoning articles, and we have to file that report with the clerk that night. So, the articles that were publicized initially as part of the first public hearing that drawn is disclosed are all part of the zoning bylaw, and they all need to be treated in a very special way in order to get the attorney general to approve of the process. And so, that's what we're doing. We're holding a public hearing. There'll be a report from the planning board. We'll announce our vote at the town meeting. The next session that we're opening now is in regard to other articles that are on the warrant that we're not required to hold a public hearing for, but it seemed appropriate, and a lot of those comments have already been made, but it seemed appropriate to allow people a chance to comment if they so chose. So, that's why there's these two entities going on here.
Oh, we do have a comment.
Of course. You know, I belong to the Berlin Google groups, and somebody just said, we just got the meeting notice in the mail. It's hard to make out the series of add this sentence there articles. What are the intent of all the changes? Does anyone know what the final document will say? What sort of development are they intending to do down at the Rotary Now? So, I know that you have to do it legally, but is there some way that you could, like, put a summary sentence and say, because when I read it, unless you really know those bylaws, it makes, what gets sent down to the public makes absolutely...
In the warrant that was mailed out?
Yeah.
I mean, that's why you have the public hearing, and that's why we're fortunate that it's being picked up by cable, and it'll be broadcast, and, you know, hopefully, if people get a chance to listen to it, and if you have friends, say, you know, go and listen to that broadcast, because I think tonight has probably clarified for a lot of people any issues that, or any misunderstandings they had about what was intended.
At the town meeting, if the moderator will allow us, we'll probably have a similar, or maybe the same, presentation at the town meeting.
When's that going to be on?
Any other comments before this? This hearing is closed. Okay, this hearing is closed.